City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
Six to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, November 10th, 2014, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is Mayor's public announcements. I'd like to thank everyone who voted. City Clerk, I thought we had a pretty good turnout in Evanston. Is that correct?
Oh, yes. It tripled, I mean, not tripled, but seven times what we did the last time.
That's a pretty good turnout. Thank you, everyone. City Manager, do you have announcements?
I do not.
Thank you. And City Clerk, do you have communications?
Just two announcements. Just want to invite all those over here to come Thursday at 7:30 here at the Civic Center for the first annual Fire Citizens Academy graduation. About 30 of us in the class, and we're inviting anybody to come and come and witness the first class that Evanston's Fire Department has put together. And again, thanks to everyone for voting. Great turnout. Let's do it again in the next election time. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. No one has signed up. Does anyone wish to speak who didn't sign up? All right. Thank you. And next is the consent agenda. Alderman Rainey is gone tonight. Alderman Wynn, would you do the consent agenda, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item on the consent agenda is M1, approval of minutes of the special city council meeting of October 25th, 2014. Next item is M2, approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting of October 27th, 2014. Both of those are for action tonight. Administration and Public Works Committee, A1, City of Evanston payroll through October 19th, 2014, $2,824,691 and 61.76. A2, City of Evanston bills, November 11th, 2014, $4,313,142.36. Credit card activity, period ending September 30th, 2014, $156,868.50. Both of those are for action tonight. Item A 3.1, approval of contract increase with Safe Built Inc. for backup building inspection and plan review services. The staff recommends city council authorize the city manager to increase the backup building inspection and plan review services contract agreement amount from $20,000 to a not-to-exceed amount of $35,000 with Safe Built due to significantly increased need for plan review services. Funding for the increased services will be provided by available balance of $20,000 in construction engineering services account. That item is for action tonight. Next is item A 3.2, approval of towing contracts for snow towing operations. The staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to execute contracts for snow towing services in an amount not to exceed $60,000 for various towing companies. That item is for action tonight. Next, A 3.3, approval of contract with O'Hara Construction Inc. for the Fleetwood Jordan Community Center Fitness Center and Lorraine H. Morton Civic Center ground floor ceiling installation. Staff recommends city council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the Fleetwood Jordan Community Center Fitness Center and the Morton Civic Center acoustical ceiling installation project with O'Hara Construction in the amount of $19,991. The funding is provided from the capital improvement fund. That item is for action. Next, A4, approval of a one-month employee health insurance premium contribution holiday. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager to give a one-month employee health insurance premium holiday for the month of December 2014. Funding is provided by city healthcare savings due to lower claim costs that has resulted in the city's overall healthcare costs decreasing in 2014. That item is for action. A5, approval for free holiday parking in the city's three downtown self-park garages and Lot 60 located at 1234 Chicago Avenue. Staff recommends that the city council approve free holiday parking in the city's three downtown self-park garages and Lot 60 on weekdays between 5:00 PM and 12:00 midnight and all day on Saturday beginning Thursday, November 27th through Saturday, January 3rd. Funding is provided by the parking fund. That item is for action. A6, Resolution 85R14, designation of Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Authorized IMRF Agent. The staff recommends city council adopt this resolution, appointing Marty Lyons as the IMRF Authorized Agent. A7, Ordinance 136014, amending subsection 3-4-6A regarding retail sale of wine and beer for consumption off premises. The local liquor commissioner recommends the city council adopt this ordinance which permits the retail sale of wine, refrigerated beer, and/or unrefrigerated beer in original packaging for consumption off the premises with the retail sale of food products. That item is for introduction tonight. A8, Ordinance 128014, authorizing the lease of 2022 Central Street, Evanston, with 2022 Central LLC DBA Lush Wine and Spirits. This is the city's property, former property, next to the library on Central Street. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a commercial lease with 2022 Central Lush Wine and Spirits for the lease of city-owned real estate property located at this location. Also, suspension of the rules is requested for this. A9, Ordinance 139014, amending the Class I liquor license, increasing the number of Class I liquor licenses for 2022 Central Lush Wine and Spirits. The local liquor commissioner recommends adoption of this ordinance which amends the city code revising the current unused Class I liquor license classification to more comprehensively and adequately address the retail sale of alcoholic liquor on premises which are restaurants with an additional retail sales area, increasing number of authorized Class I liquor licenses from zero to one. Suspension of the rules is also requested for this item. A10, Ordinance 137014, amending the Evanston City Code Title VII, Chapter 12 relating to the city waterworks system charges, rates, fees, and penalties. Staff recommends-
Please remove that.
This item has been requested to be taken off the consent agenda. It will be addressed by the committee chair. Item A11, Ordinance 140014, amending Title 10 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 11 Traffic Schedules, Section 10 Schedule 10(c), two-hour limited parking on Ewing Avenue. Staff recommends that the city council adopt this ordinance by including the east side of Ewing Avenue from Harrison Street to the restricted 30-minute space at Central Street as limited two-hour parking between the hours of 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM on any day except Sunday and national holidays. That's for introduction. Item A12, Ordinance 141014, amending Title 10 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 11 Traffic Schedules, Section 10 Schedule X-F6, Residential Exemption Parking District A on Noys Street. Staff recommends the city amend this title. That this would eliminate the residential permit exemption for the two-hour parking restrictions in the 800 and 900 blocks of Noys Street to better manage the increased business activity in that area, a good reason. That's for introduction. A13, Ordinance 125014, increasing the number of Class C1 liquor licenses for Bangers and Lace Evanston, doing businesses Bangers and Lace at 810 Grove Street. Staff recommends adoption of this ordinance, which increases the number of authorized Class C1 liquor licenses from six to seven. This item was introduced on October 27th, and it's here for action tonight. Next, we have Planning and Development Committee, P1, Ordinance 129014, granting a special use for a restaurant type II, 800 Degrees Neapolitan Pizzeria at 812 Church Street. The ZBA and the city staff recommend adoption of this ordinance. The applicant has complied with all zoning requirements and meets all the standards for a special use for this district. This was introduced at the October 27th meeting, and it's for action here tonight. Next, we have Housing and Community Development Act Committee, O1, Resolution 86R14, approving the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Area Plan and Citizen Precipitation Plan of the city's 2015 to 2019 Proposed Consolidated Plan. The committee and staff recommend adoption of this resolution, approving these plans, which are part of the city's proposed consolidated plan for the next five years. This item is for action. Finally, we have the Special Order of Business, which is not part of the consent agenda, I don't believe.
No.
Okay.
And then appointments.
Then appointments. We have Lat Arboretum Committee, we have Pamela Johnson. And with that, Madam Mayor, that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I apologize for my tardiness. Is A8 on or off the consent? It's off?
No, it's on.
Oh, it's on. No, it's on.
It's on for suspension of the rules and-
Yeah.
And the rules?
Well, and we have to come back to it, is what I meant. But yes, it's-
Just moved to the rules and requested for A8 and A9.
Okay.
But it's been introduced for now.
All right. So this is just introduction. It'll come back again for action at the next meeting?
No.
No, tonight?
Okay, then I'd like to take it off, please.
Okay.
Both A8 and A9?
No, just A8.
All right. Seeing no lights on for further discussion, City Clerk, would you call the roll for the consent agenda?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tandem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Hey, to nothing that consent agenda passes. Alderman Holmes, would you walk us through Administration and Public Works?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A8, Ordinance 128-0-14, authorizing the lease of 2022 Central Street with doing business as Lush Wine and Spirits. Staff recommends the adoption of Ordinance 128-0-14, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a commercial lease for this property owned by the city, city-owned real estate property located at 2022 Central Street.
Move approval.
Okay. And second, it's been moved and second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Does anyone want to speak to the issue?
I'm going to be voting against it.
Okay.
Okay. And then I would move then, Madam Mayor, the suspension of the rules is requested to permit introduction and action for tonight, November 10th, 2014.
I'll be voting against that as well.
All right. So the first item is to vote on suspension of the rules. Well, I know she's voting against it, but she has to vote or vote.
No. I would call it.
Okay. Would you call the roll?
Suspension of the rules.
It's been introduced. Oh, you took it off? Okay.
She took it off of the consent agenda, I think. Versus introduced. Right.
Okay, so we're voting introduction?
We're voting for introduction. All in favor of introducing this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right. Next is to suspend the rules. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tandem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Six to two.
But if anyone votes no, you can't do it.
That's right.
So the rules are not suspended. Next item is A9. Alderman Holmes.
She didn't, she didn't want to, the next one is A10.
Yes, A10.
A10.
No, it wasn't touched.
Okay, we don't want to vote for introduction and action for A9?
No, it was approved on-
It was approved during consent.
The whole thing, okay. Yeah, that's what I thought. We still have to suspend the rules for A9, though.
Ah, okay. Ordinance 139-0-14, amending the Class I liquor license and increasing the number of Class I liquor license for 2022 Central Street doing business as Lush Wine and Spirits at 2022 Central Street. I move suspension of the rules.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. All right. Is there a motion to approve it for action? All right. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tandem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
The motion passes.
Okay, A10, Ordinance 137-0-14, amending the Evanston City Code Title VII, Chapter 12 relating to the city waterwork system, charge, charges, rates, fees, and penalties. Staff recommends city council adoption of Ordinance 137-0-14, amending the Evanston City Code Title VII, Chapter 12 relating to the city work systems, charges, rates, fees, and penalties. Staff is recommending a 10% water rate increase effective January 1, 2015. The minimum charges and for the quantity of water charges are proposed to increase by 10% for introduction tonight. Move approval.
Been moved and seconded. Does anyone want to speak to this? All right, then, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
No.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
No.
Alderman Tandem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Six to two.
Six to two. The motion passes. Alderman Holmes?
That completes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so moving right along, we are at the Special Order of Business, which is a budget discussion.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We provided with tonight's agenda a revised budget memo packet for you, which is dated 11/5. As we've done in past years, we have added on to the previous memo, so you could just keep track of one document. Those responses, new responses, begin on page 34 of this document. And let me just briefly go through that again for members of the public. What we normally do is the council makes requests at meetings as well as between meetings regarding specific questions. There were 33 pages of response prior to our last meeting. We have added this evening answers dealing with the following questions regarding the summary of transfers that are included in the proposed budget for debt service, which begins on page 34, a question regarding employee count and full-time equivalents, which is on page 35, a series of pages regarding the Solid Waste Fund, and that begins on page 36, with tables on 37, 38, and 39, a memorandum regarding alley paving costs, which begin on page 40, a memorandum dealing with the vital records service, which begins on page 41 and continues to page 43. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're here to answer any questions about the answers that we've provided, as well as to hear any other questions or concerns that you have. Just to remind you that next Monday on November 17th, it is my intention to come back to the council with revisions to the proposed budget based on the questions, and it's my hope that upon presenting those revisions to the proposed budget, that they will find that acceptable. If you do, it is our intention then to come back to you on Monday, November 24th, with the appropriate ordinances and resolutions enacting the 2015 budget. So with that, we're happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To the city manager, I had a specific question about vital records, wanting to see a breakdown of the expenses by light item. They would include staff and any other expenses involved with running that office. Is it possible to have that before we vote?
That was not included in the first batch. We could certainly continue to provide more detail, and we can, we'll have that for you before next week.
Thank you very much, sir.
City Manager, I was worried about our street paving plans. We seem to be getting further behind each year, and I wondered if we could put more money into street paving and if we could eventually come up with a plan to at least stay even rather than to lose ground each year.
All right. What we can do, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is look at the budget. Mr. Lyons, could you maybe come up and speak just briefly about what we already have in the current budget? And Director Robinson's here as well.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green, Manager Bob Quitz, Marty Lyons, Assistant City Manager. What we have in the capital improvements plan to date per the city engineers' discussion, I think it was two meetings ago, that we were looking at just over five miles of streets, and he noted that we had 175 lane miles or thereabouts. I might be off by a mile or two. And that in that discussion, we talked about streets lasting 15 to 20 years. So when you do that math, that the mayor comes up with her note that we're not quite staying up. We're at about somewhere closer to doing 100 miles of streets in a given 20-year cycle. So we need to step it up a little bit to stay current with all of our streets. So that's the overall view. That view is always in conflict with our goal to reduce debt. So this year, we do have a reduction in the debt that we're planning to issue by, it was about $700,000, $700,000 less in debt issued that would be paid by property taxes to go towards capital improvement projects. So with that being said, if we wish to keep that there, one of the things that we can look at is transferring funds from the current year and moving money into the capital improvements fund, similar to what we did in years past, to add some additional lane miles, if you will, to what our plan is right now. And if you'd like, Mr. City Manager, what we asked Public Works, how much does a mile cost? With what you can see in the capital plan, you could divine that out, and if you ask engineers, they would tell you it depends on how thick of a road you're putting in. But we did nail that, nail them down, and what we're looking at is it's about $700,000 per mile, if you will, of a normal resurfaced street. So finishing off the thought, whether it's a mile or a half mile, the current general fund has a surplus projected at $800,000 for this year. So if we wish to, we could look at an end-of-year surplus and moving some of those funds into the capital fund, as we've done in years past. And to finish the thought, the general fund is above its newly raised minimum reserves. So we are somewhere close to about 20% in fund reserves in the general fund, and we should have 16.6% for two months.
So, Madam Mayor, we'll go back and see, I'm pretty confident, based on Mr. Lyons' comments, that we can provide funding, if not a full additional mile, perhaps a half mile.
A half mile would be terrific. Does anyone have any problems or concerns with that? Okay. Anything else, everyone? I know we've been over this budget extensively. Alderman Burris?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like clarification and just for the public to understand more about the library levy, and I'm going to call on Mr. Farrar, who is already ready, as I flipped on my light. And to explain that there was some confusion around the state statute of the amount they did library could levy, but if the library is part of a home rule municipality, that it can levy higher if the council of that home rule municipality gives their authorization to do so. Am I getting that kind of right, Mr. Farrar? And could you explain, so the entire public will understand the difference on what that means as far as the statute versus what we can do? Thank you.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green grant for our corporation council. Respect to this particular issue, this follows upon some discussions that have evolved over the past few years with respect to how the library board recommends the levy amount and the city council adopts. I think what is now interesting is the discussion, discussion has matured to this particular point, is the question of if, in fact, the library board was to recommend a levy that would exceed its tax cap under the Local Library Act. And so it's my understanding, and in consultation with Mr. Lyons, that indeed the library board has proposed a levy that would exceed its particular tax capped basis under the Library Act. So what happens is that is a component of the city's levy. It's my understanding the library board has had truth and tax hearings, will convene another one. So the question becomes, the city as a home rule entity, can it utilize its home rule powers to adopt a levy that exceeds the tax cap as recommended by the library board, or can it choose instead, propose to have a levy that's under the tax cap and essentially have some sort of continuing jurisdiction, continuing say? Under the Library Act, and in consultation with some other sources and some other legal opinions, I am of the opinion that the city can choose to adopt a lower levy amount than that recommended by the library board. The cap mapping, again, is that the Local Library Act specifically states that in instances where a levy proposed by a library board exceeds its cap, that a home rule municipality can elect to pass and adopt a levy that has a lower amount.
Thank you. Did that fully answer you, Alderman Burris?
Yes, so the gist of that is if the council chooses, since the library board has decided to raise over, above the statute that is the other library boards have to meet, and they're looking to raise taxes, we, as a council, have the option to say we're going to keep them at the statutory level instead of allowing them to raise taxes further.
The city council, in its home, in its exercise of its home rule prerogative and authority, can concur with the library board's recommendation as it currently stands, can reduce the levy based upon its own action, or it can continue to have discussions with the library board if it so choose to arrive at some different funding figure.
Okay. I just want to be clear, as we vote on this, that now the library board is making a recommendation to go above the statutory limit, that also the city council is making a determination to go along with going above that statutory limit. So if that's, if that does happen, I just want to be really clear about what we're voting on and how we're voting. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Tandem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a sort of ongoing interest in keeping track of the funding for the Evanston Animal Shelter, and I'm wondering if we could get a new revised numbers for where we are this year, but I'm also wondering if we've allocated $35,000 for the shelter next year, what, does that include an expectation of private funding for the shelter to meet its, our standards that we've already established, but also improve standards? So those two things I'd like to know in regard to the shelter.
And Madam Mayor, Alderman Tandem, on page 26 of the answer memo, there are details regarding the animal shelter. On page 27 is the $35,000 amount. We are not anticipating in the budget any raised money. There is not a plan currently, as we move forward, how that would happen. The Animal Board of Animal Control continues to meet. They'll be coming back to Human Services at the December meeting with an update, so those- So those plans are still in the works as to what the future holds. So we did not feel comfortable budgeting any dollar amount for raised money. So that $35,000 that's currently budgeted would come out of the general fund. And we could get, Chief Eddington is here, we'll be able to update the costs at least through November, through October 31st. So we can have that, Ashley, as an addendum to this budget memo for your next meeting.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
Do we know the amount or the percentage that the library board has gone above the levy that is mandated? And if so, can we find out what that means in terms of the budget that, or the plan that the library has for this upcoming year? What kind of effect will that have on it? So I need two things.
Good evening, Alderman Holmes. The situation with all of our levies over the past three years has been dynamic, meaning that the county assessor has been reducing the city's assessed value, which in turn changes the rate that is generated by our levy. As a home rule community, that doesn't affect the city. Our rate floats to where we need, we need it to be. We have a flat dollar levy. So if our total levy is $40 million, we levy $40 million for pensions and everything, and the rate adjusts. In the case of tax capped entities, such as District 202, when the assessed value goes down, they don't lose their ability to maintain their levy. So their rate can also go up. What, I'll give you the example, though, that does pertain to the library, I believe, and that is our special service area number four that funds the downtown, it has a cap. And it has a cap that is set by ordinance. And for the past three years, they have been hitting their cap. So they might levy $400,000, but they hit their cap of .1464 when they get to $300,000. So the county quits collecting at that point. That's the purpose of that ordinance-driven cap. Right now, the, based on the 2013 assessed value, dropping to $2.2 billion, that forced the library rate with their new levy up to about .26, which is above the statutory limit. And that limit is composed of three categories. They have a base rate of .15, a working cash rate of .05, and what's the .02? Do you remember? I won't remember. It all adds up to .23. So they're over by about three tenths, sorry, three one-hundreds of a percent. So the, their, their limit is .23, and they're at .26 is what their rate will be if they levy what's in the proposed budget. And assuming the assessed value doesn't change.
And Mr. Lyons, what's the cash value of that three one-hundredth of a percent? Approximately?
Just trying to, so it's the, that's a little more than, they're a little more than 10% over. So .23 would be their top, and they're at .26. So they're about 10, 11% over.
And what's the cash value of that?
$600,000, thereabouts. It's, their levy is currently 500,000, so 5 million of last year. So it'd be about 12% of last year's levy.
Okay, so we can, we can scrub that number, but it's in that $600,000 range, citywide?
I don't know, I'm sorry. What do you mean, citywide?
Of all taxpayers, of all taxes paid, the value is 600,000.
Correct. And that was in the levy memo because their amount of increase, we had that detailed down to a 300,000, a 600,000, and a 900,000 market value property. So we had that broken down, what, and I think the increase was 800,000 overall. So we said that that was worth $20, $40, and $60 per household.
Okay.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Marty Lyons met with the Animal Control Board several weeks ago, Alderman Tandem, and we had a good discussion, and I think $35,000 will work in terms of operations. There's been a very broad discussion about reductions in costs and services provided at the animal shelter. So the volunteers at the shelter and EPD staff have been working very hard to outreach to organizations and individuals that will provide us an even lower cost of service going outside and getting food donated, things like that. So I think we'll have actually a really interesting budget discussion, but I think that $35,000 will work, as well as folks that are coming forward to donate to the shelter, and there are a lot of them. So we're getting a handle on those numbers now. But when we met with Mr. Lyons, we had a good conversation about that, so.
Alderman Burris.
Oh, Alderman just raised a point about donations to the shelter. What mechanism are we taking donations? What entity is receiving those cash donations? Where is it being housed, and who's managing that funding?
And Madam Mayor, Alderman Burris, you all may recall that when the city separated with CARE, one of the actions that you took was to create a fund specifically to receive donations that were made. So at this point, those donations are coming to us, are being placed in a fund. I don't know if any of the budget staff has a number off the top of your head over what has been received. There's also been discussion at the Animal, Board of Animal Control regarding the creation of a 501(c)(3). They've asked for that item to come back to you. We're still, as a city staff, trying to sort through a recommendation as to how best to proceed there. We have not, as city staff, created a 501(c)(3). We have helped groups of individuals organize who have then gone on to create a 501(c)(3). The Police and Fire Foundation is a good example of that. But we've not had a city board or commission request that a 501(c)(3) be created, and we're still trying to sort through how we might recommend the best next steps for the council. So the, our current plan is to have the Board of Animal Control come back to the Human Services Committee on December the 1st, and then we'll likely have an item on the 8th to deal with the creation of a 501(c)(3). But right now, there is a fund in place. Mr. Lyons, do you happen to know what's on account there?
I don't know the number, Mr. City Manager. I just wanted to provide the clarification. What we do is set up a separate reserve account in the general fund, not unlike we have a separate account for private elm insurance, where residents pay in an amount for their own private elm tree. We hold on to that amount. And if they have, have to have the tree taken down, then we can actually pay for that out of that reserve that doesn't involve any tax dollars. So by the same methodology, we would collect the funds. And after we do collect a sufficient amount, what we do like to do, though, is include the expense as a budget item. So if the Animal Control Board would like to spend 20,000 of 40,000 that was donated, we'd like to budget it, show that expense when it is spent out of that reserve. So we'll be working on that with the board, and I'll have a dollar amount that we have right now for the next meeting.
Can I just do a follow-up question? I just need a clarification. So when you say that you would talk to the Animal Board, so the Animal Board is making funding decisions now, and, or is that going through Mr. Bob Quitz and through AP&amp;W? I just, I think that's, that's a clarification because that's, would be an unusual situation. So again, I'm just concerned that we've had such challenges with a 501(c)(3) running the organization previously, and now we're in this odd limbo of something. We have a board kind of up there, and then we're also receiving donations. And we talked about doing an RFP to have a different group come in and actually run this, and now we're talking about establishing another 501(c)(3). So I'm just concerned that money's coming in and how is it being allocated?
And Alderman Burris, members of the council, right now, as Mr. Lyons has indicated, there really is not a sufficient amount that we've come forward to the city council. The city council ultimately would allocate. The Board of Animal Control, I think, has been working diligently on behalf of the council to come up with what they think makes sense for next steps. I also have recently met with the board last week and expressed my concern to them that time continues to pass, and that I think it's important for the ongoing stability of the shelter to have a plan in place. You, Alderman Burris, as Chair of Human Services, have requested this item be on for the December 1st meeting. I had indicated to the board my desire to have an update and to discuss further. I think it's just important that we move forward as diligently as possible, and I know the board, both Alderman Fisk and Alderman Grover, serve on the board as the council's representatives, so they may wish to address this as well. But I think we're all in the same place, that we need to move forward. I think it's just a matter of timing and procedure in order to do that. But I think the shelter is operating well, under the direction of the Police Department. There are volunteers there on a regular basis doing what they need to do, and both dogs and cats are coming in and being adopted. So all those things are happening, and that's all very positive. But I think we are at the point where we need to move on to those next steps. And I would imagine we'll be talking more about that on December 1st.
Thank you. Alderman Grover. Thank you. Alderman Tandem.
So if someone wants to make a nice contribution as an end-of-the-year giving or something, is there any way they can write that off as a tax deduction?
Absolutely. All donations to local governments are tax exempt, and we have the appropriate documents from the IRS to share with anyone if their tax advisor needs additional information.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
I was just going to say that at the meeting, Alderman Burris, when you were away, the Board really did say that they, the Chair of the Board, they wanted until the end of the year to come up with a solid plan. So we said that that was okay, and so this is what this December meeting will be about, I'm assuming, that they will come back hopefully with a plan so that we can move on. We did push that.
Thank you. Seeing no lights for further discussion, does anyone have anything more on the budget? All right, we are at Call of the Wards, and I would apologize, I didn't realize I'd been given a gift. I think we all were, and I would like to thank the on-and-off Forest Avenue Chowder and Marching Society for the daffodils. Thank you very much. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, is it correct? And for all the veterans out there, thank you for your service. We appreciate it very much, including my husband and anyone else who served.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd also like to acknowledge all the veterans who served our country so bravely. This Thursday, we have our second ward meeting. Thursday, the 13th, at 7:00 PM at District 65 Building, to those that are interested, we'll have the owners of Valley Produce, the new owners of the mall, will be there to share a little bit about their store operations, talk a little bit about their vision for the center, and most importantly, answer questions from our residents. So I encourage you all to attend. Secondly, this is a referral, and I'm not sure where I need to make it, if it's to Community Economic Development or the City Manager's Office. It goes back to the West Evanston Plan. And as I've asked staff, if, when you look at the West Evanston Plan, it basically goes from Simpson all the way to Church Street, and it stops at Lake. And so just thanks to the involvement of many, thanks to our staff, residents, also our business association, we've seen a lot of development within the west end of town, particularly the Dempster Dodge Corridor. And some of the things and feedback that I've heard from our residents, we know that Dempster Street will be resurfaced next year. We also know that there's going to be a traffic study along Dempster as well, just to keep track of the traffic with adding additional businesses and making sure that it still remains somewhat safe, or safe for pedestrians to walk back and forth in the street. The other thing that we know is that we're going to install a bike lane along Dodge from Howard all the way to Lake Street, which will also eliminate a number of spots. The basic request is just, as we focus on the infrastructure needs of an area that's going to be changing very rapidly in the next couple of years, looking for a plan, something that will guide us along the way so that we can use it as a tool to help residents understand what's going on in that area, as well for new businesses that will come into that area. So that's sort of my request that I'm throwing out. It's basically, it's an expansion to the west end plan. I don't, I want to be mindful of the process, but I also want to be mindful that residents have an opportunity to see how that area will change, so.
And Madam Member, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the last, the West Evanston Plan that we currently have was done prior to my arrival, and I would ask the council for assistance as to where this would go. I understand that the last plan required a significant amount of staff and consultant resources. We do not have that contemplated for next year, nor have we even begun to cost something like that. So I'm not sure if it's a referral to the Economic Development Committee for discussion or planning and development. So I'm looking at Alderman Holmes.
And I'm, and I'm thinking, if I remember correctly, and Alderman, Rainey's not here, but Alderman, maybe you'll remember, it came out of the Plan Commission in terms of, it comes, it starts there.
Okay.
And, and they designated the area, if I remember correctly. So it did not come out of either one of those committees.
Okay.
Comes from, it begins with, it began with the Plan Commission, if I remember.
So perhaps then the referral.
The Plan Commission has a subcommittee called the Neighborhood Plan.
Plan, yes.
At the Neighborhood Committee. And that's, I don't know whether it's currently active, but that's where the various neighborhood plans started.
Okay. So I guess then, Madam Mayor, it would probably be appropriate for the referral then to the Plan Commission.
That makes sense.
Very good.
And it did take a long time. I mean, it was a long process for the West, for the West Evanston Plan. And there was real reasons for it stopping at Lake and, you know, going as far as Simpson where it went to at that time. Covered a lot of areas, a lot of area.
Yeah. Well, this specific referral then will be just looking specifically at infrastructure from Lake Street to Main, basically two blocks, north and southeast and west of the shopping center.
And I hear you, and I, but I still think that probably, would probably constitute the same kind of planning, and especially for the community input, because it did take a lot. We had a lot of visioning sessions. Sarah, you were, you were, were you here? I was trying to remember. I mean, it's been such a long time, because if I remember correctly, it started about, because it started before I got on the council. And I want to say it started like in 2003, and we didn't finish it until 2006, I want to say, something like that, or '07. We, yeah, we approved it in 2007. So this, it was a long process.
Thank you, Alderman Win.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank the sixth graders from Nichols School, who this morning were out at Lee Street Beach and in the park along the lakefront, doing a fantastic job of cleanup. There's been a lot of debris that's blown up recently, and they were having a delightful time scouring our lakefront for all of the plastic and trash that's been there. So I really want to thank them for that. And also, I want to thank all of our veterans for their service, urging everyone to find a veteran in your family, in your neighborhood, at your church, or your house of worship, and ask them to tell you a story. It's definitely worthwhile. That's all, Madam.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
And I just want to echo the sentiments about Veterans Day and express my deep gratitude. If not for the sacrifices that these individuals have made, we wouldn't be enjoying the benefits of the liberties and freedoms that we enjoy.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Both my father and my husband, and my sons, both sons, my stepson and my son are veterans. And in honor of that, this year, I joined the Women's Auxiliary of Post 7186. So I'm a new member of that. My first meeting last Tuesday. So I would also like to just say, this was a wonderful weekend, lots of activities. First off, I want to congratulate all of those who attended the Butch Martin's Foundation First off, I want to congratulate all of those who attended the Butch Martin's Foundation, I want to say Spotlight, is that right, Clickring? Spotlight on you, community people. I think there were 49 people recognized, 41 people recognized yesterday by Denise Martin and her family, just in terms of community involvement, not necessarily in terms of what their positions might be, what jobs they had, but just in terms of their community involvement. It was a really interesting and a very worthwhile program. The other thing, of course, we had the most fascinating, exciting street naming I think that Evanston has ever had in terms of Hecq Paul's Way between Emerson and, on Emerson Street between Asbury and Green Bay. And it was very exciting, lots and lots of people. We never, I never expected that many people to be out there, and thanks to our Police Department and our Fire Department. Most of all, thanks to our City Manager for making it all work. And I'm sure that you will see in someone's newspaper a picture of Hecq Paul climbing the ladder, taking the sign down because the strings didn't work. But it was a great event, and we're very proud of the 30 years that Hecq has been on that corner, and more importantly, proud of all of the work he's done for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tandem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually have a video of the events I will share with you. It's great. And it was a wonderful get-together and, you know, terrific turnout. I wanted to first refer to council, something I've been talking about with several staff members, about our ordinances or lack of ordinances regarding invisible fences. And I would just like to know what other communities do, don't do, if anything. And because there have been two incidents in my ward now where fences within a foot of the sidewalk, invisible fences have been put in place within a foot of the sidewalk, and it hasn't had good results. And secondly, I'd like to just thank staff for their incredible Halloween weekend extravaganza with all the events that went on on Halloween, and especially the Zombie Scramble, was it? The next day was just, I mean, if you haven't seen it, it's worth checking out the video. I presume it's on our website. It was just an amazing whole weekend of indoor and outdoor activities that were well-attended and certainly well-planned.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I keep hearing about the Zombie Scramble from a group of 14-year-olds who participated and told me it exceeded all their expectations. They didn't understand it would be more than just trying to evade zombies. It involved challenges such as carving out a pumpkin and so forth. So it was quite a success, and I hope that we'll do it again next year, and we'll have to recruit more zombies because it'll be oversubscribed again. I just want to note that I am saddened, as I think most of us are, that Next Theater has gone dark, and it's a loss to the Evanston community and to our artist community in Evanston. The Next Theater's shrinking audiences did include my husband and me in the last few years. We subscribed along with neighbors of ours for at least three or four years and have so enjoyed those productions. And I'm, I think, like everyone here, we really wanted them to succeed and yet have more successful seasons. And so it's with regret that I note that the Next Theater is now dark.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
Thank you. I want to extend my condolences to Anjana Hansen and Hansen and her family, as her father passed away last week. And thank you to all the veterans for your service to our nation.
Thank you. Sir motion to adjourn. Fall in favor? Opposed? Do the ayes have it?